Now I'd like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education, regular meeting for Tuesday, October 1st, to order. If you all would please stand for the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, National Anthem, and Posting of Colors.
Let us pray.
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening to conduct the business of New Hanover County Schools. Lord, we pray for our nation to come together for the benefit of us all. We pray for this great state of North Carolina to continue to grow and prosper. We especially pray for our community here in New Hanover County. There is much work to be done to protect our students and to provide them with the best education possible. Thank you, Lord, for all of the people who came out to share with us tonight. May we listen with open minds and open hearts to what the people have to say. We are so blessed to live in a community that is passionate about our schools. Father, bless the members of our Board of Education. Give them wisdom, patience, and insight. And please give them an extra, give an extra portion of strength to our board chair as she leads. Bless the staff of this entire district. Give us the strength to do our very best each day and to do it unto you, dear Lord. And Lord, finally, I would ask that you would bless the students with a successful school year. We pray that our schools are a safe haven for our students, a place of excellence and encouragement, courage and kindness, learning and laughter. These and all blessings we ask in your most holy name. Amen.
The colors. Right, got it. Footwork, march. Freeze and colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight, everyone. I am Jackie Booth, the Supervisor of Arts Education for New Hanover County Schools, and we're glad to have you all here tonight. We would like to take a moment to introduce all of our wonderful singers tonight and our cadets from the Laney ROTC. So we're going to do that. I would like to start over here with Castle Hayne Elementary School. Yeah. We'd like to meet our principal tonight, our teacher, and then we're going to hear from our students as well and get their names and grades.
Thank, oh, gosh. I know it was a pretty good performance. I didn't know it would make you fall, but thank you. I'm Sam Highsmith, the proud principal of Castle Hayne, the Hurricanes, and we're very proud of this group under the direction of our great leader here.
Hi, my name is Catherine Charles, and I'm the Music Specialist at Castle Hayne. And these are some of my fifth graders. Because we do US, I mean, yes, US History in the fifth grade, I always like to get a group of fifth graders together to sing. And now they're going to introduce themselves to you.
Hi, my name is Jayden.
Hi, my name is Abby, and I am Miss Litzingers class.
Hi, my name is Natalia, and I'm in Miss DeConte's class.
Hi, my name is Delana, and I'm in Miss Litzingers class.
Hi, my name is Laura, and I'm in Miss Brainerd's class.
Hi, my name is Brynlee, and I'm in Miss Litzingers class.
Hi, my name's Arianna, and I am in Miss White's class.
Hi, my name is Dominic, and I'm in Miss White's class.
Hi, my name is Dylan, and I'm in Miss DeConte's class.
Thank you very much, Castle Hayne. We would also like to recognize our Eugene Ashley High School ROTC members that posted the colors for us today. So we're going to start there.
Hi, my name is Chief Ross. On behalf of Sergeant Eugene Ashley High School, thank you, board members, thank you, Dr. Markley, and thank you, parents and guests, to have us part of your program. And I'd like to turn the microphone over to my cadets.
My name is Manning, a second-year cadet.
My name is Karise Brunson. I'm an 11th grader in high school.
I'm Cadet Dallas. I'm a junior.
Cadet Carol, and I'm a sophomore.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, and I want to thank Ms. Quadabom for that beautiful invocation. Moving on to item number two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, I would like to ask for a motion for approval.
Booth.
Any discussion, hearing, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Item number three, recognition of achievement. Ms. Quadabom?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will begin our recognitions by highlighting one of our community partners, and that is with Vocational Rehabilitation Services. Now, I know we heard from them last month, but this month, our friend, Mr. Matt Grace, who is the Assistant Unit Manager for Volk Rehab, will share with us the broader picture of how they operate in the Wilmington community. So they not only partner with us, but all of the other great things they do. So it's a broader perspective. Mr. Grace?
Thank you so much. I'd like to thank the board, first off, for allowing me this time to come in and speak before you and share a little bit about what our agency does. As I was introduced, my name is Matt Grace. I'm the Assistant Unit Manager with Vocational Rehabilitation. And in a nutshell, what we do is we work with individuals that do have disabilities and impediments to get to work, and we help them achieve their employment goals, long-term sustainable employment. And this is something very near and dear to my heart. So please forgive me if I speak passionately about this. I will keep this as brief as I can. I know that you have a full agenda tonight, so. Basically, VR is a state agency that assists with those individuals with disabilities to obtain and maintain or retain their current employment. We do provide direct employment services to employers such as New Hanover County Schools as we've developed that partnership over the past year, and it's turned out to be just a phenomenal experience for not only New Hanover County Schools Vocational Rehabilitation, but primarily for our clients and our community. At the end of the day, the goal is the same. This board and New Hanover County Schools were preparing individuals to work and meet the challenges that face them in the world and make this New Hanover County a better community for all of us. Basically, we were based upon the Federal Legislation Act of 1973, and this was updated by the Work Opportunity Initiatives Act in 2014. We do have the third-party agreement with New Hanover County Schools in response to that. And it's taken us a little bit of time to get some traction in getting things rolling, but the past year has seen some really exciting developments within Vocational Rehabilitation. Our eligibility basically is based upon medical documentation. There is not an entitlement to our services. You do need to meet our eligibility criteria, which is primarily based upon a medical diagnosis, and that that disability or impairment, as we like to refer to it, to work does cause issues in either obtaining work, retaining it, or maintaining it. So we work with a variety of individuals that have both physical, possibly mental health, possibly developmental disabilities. But we do have an eligibility process that they must meet and go through. There is, we get a referral from a variety of agencies, mental health, doctors, school systems, individuals themselves, and then we get them set up with an individual counselor who will determine the eligibility for them. Each person receives an individualized plan for this employment. A lot of them may have some similarities, but the nice thing is we deal with the person on an individual basis. There is no set system for one and all people. Some people, we may assist in going to college. I have an individual who started working for the Department of the Navy this month after gaining their PhD from Embry-Riddle. I have another individual who's at law school at Syracuse University. I am very proud of the individuals that work locally here in our construction businesses and our customer service. So long as that work is honorable, we are pleased and excited to be a part of it. We are an agency that does provide a wide variety of services, that it does include training. It might be training in a traditional sense in a school, but it also may include training on the job, an internship. Maybe they just need a certification, or they even need to get a GED. We will work with those individuals. We also provide job coaches. There are individuals that struggle to appropriately interact at times. They struggle with emotional regulation. We might have somebody literally on the job site with them and helping them with that. We provide surgery for individuals that must have surgery to return to work. We provide worksite accommodations. And that's just a sampling, so I'm trying to move through that real quick. And finally, we are an agency where our goal is to close out an individual's case. It is not a case that remains open indeterminately. We have a very specific achievement goal. And what we're also looking to do is change our culture a bit, and I want to take a moment to thank Chair Person E. Step for initiating one of these cultural changes. She was at the forefront of bringing New Hanover County Schools and Vocational Rehabilitation together at the same table. And since that time, we have had application days. We have employment marketing skills classes. We are working very closely with the HR department as well as special education to design programs and ways where we can bring education as well as employment to both the adult population as well as the academic population that New Hanover County Schools directly works with. So I just wanted to take that moment to thank you, Chair Person E. Step. You'll see, as part of our efforts to change the culture, we provide training to the schools as well, to employers. One of them is windmills training. Many, if not all, of the principals and assistant principals and staff of schools have attended this training, and the positive feedback we have gotten has been wonderful. They truly enjoy it. It's an opportunity to learn how to work with individuals that may not be the easiest to communicate with at times. We work with public relations. Here I am in front of the Board of Education of New Hanover County Schools, which I never thought I'd have the opportunity to do before, so thanks again. And our inter-agency collaboration is a partnership that's just founded on truly improving our community. So again, thanks to everybody here, as well as New Hanover County Schools and Dr. Wilmers. Thank you very much for your work with us individually on that. Thank you. This is just kind of a quick down and dirty thing about direct services that we provide. It's basically to help the client maintain their employment, but also careers. Many of us think, oh, we help them get a job. What we're looking to do is develop a career for them, long-term. It's funny, I tell my clients, I hope I only have to work with you once. It's not personal, but if I do my job right, they shouldn't have to come back through. If they do, I'd love to see them again, and we'll figure out what we need to do, but I'd love to see them just once. And a lot of people may be struggling to retain their employment. Maybe they need to learn new job skills because their change, or their job has changed. We will help them to do that. We'll even send them back to school if we need to. One thing that's overlooked often, though, that really has been highlighted by our partnership with New Hanover County Schools, is the fact that we assist our employers as well. You can literally call our agency and say, I need this many employees to fill these positions. And if you give us your job specifications, we will give you a pre-vetted pool of candidates that you can interview. Now, I may not always have the exact clientele or employee that you're looking for, but I'll let you know that as soon as I can as well. So we're not just for the individual. We're trying to build our partnerships with the employers, all of the employers of New Hanover County, to expand and include individuals, no matter what challenges those individuals may be facing. This is a right-to-work state, and we need to continue to work hard with that. This relates to, how does this relate to the hiring process? Well, these are just, you'll see some, these are some jobs that we are seeking to fill with New Hanover County Schools: custodians, child nutrition, bus drivers, which we know is a big challenge, substitute teachers. I spoke with a lady that is bilingual, and I'm trying to get her in with New Hanover County Schools at this time, social workers. So I always have to ask myself and my employers, what can I do for you? And that's really how we approach the employer, as well as the employee. What as VR can we do for you? And that's how we're trying to change our culture, and that's how we're trying to work in inter-agency partnerships and organizations. So please, if you ever have any questions or would like further information about VR, please feel free to contact us through the Human Resources Department. Dr. Wilmers knows exactly how to reach me. And again, I want to thank you all for your time this evening. Thank you so much.
Does anyone have any questions?
I've worked with Matt for a few years now, and I knew that when we were starting this journey together, that you would be the right person to bring to the table. So I appreciate all that you've done, and I want to thank the different departments that have worked with VR on this, HR and PR, all these abbreviations, the Special Ed Department. It's been, it's been a really fast journey to where we are, but it's been a really rewarding one. So thank you, everyone.
It sounds as if you're our local tackle.
I'm sorry?
It sounds as if you're the local tackle.
Yes.
You know what tackle is, don't you? They keep advertising, just call them up, you get the people that you need, so.
I like to think of us as a wonderful resource for the entire county. And if I don't have an answer, I will work my darndest to find you one.
Wonderful.
I know you're working, because you're never in your office. Whenever I call, I know it's always phone tag, so I know, I appreciate how hard you work, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we will keep it moving here, and we have our school video series that was a brainchild of this board. And I see in the back my good friend, Dr. Skipper, and some CTEC staff and students. Would you please come forward and share your video that highlights the technical pathways that you offer at our newest school, CTEC? Dr. Skipper?
My name is Ashley Wall. I teach math at CTEC, and I also do yearbook. Since we are a CTE high school, instead of doing the journalism piece that goes with yearbook, we decided to start doing a newscast to do morning announcements for our students. So since that was such a good hit, Dr. Skipper was tasked with making a video of our school to spotlight CTEC and what it's about, so she deemed that onto us. And a huge thank you to New Hanover County Schools Television. Mr. Wallen was talking to them and letting them know all the stuff that we were doing, making videos, and they donated a lot of equipment to us, and it has been very beneficial in all that we've been doing. So my yearbook, half of my yearbook team is here today. I'm going to let them talk about the making of this video and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Thomas Jones.
I'm Caitlin Gishen.
I'm Jacob Thompson.
And I'm Scotty Urves.
And we're the leading students behind Southeast Area Technical High School's introduction video. We felt incredibly inspired to do something similar to Anna Wintour's 73 Questions with Vogue Interview. If you haven't watched it, I highly recommend it. In the video, Anna Wintour walks around her office of Vogue magazine, not only answering questions to the interviewer, but to the many people around her.
We felt like this would be an incredible way to show off our new campus and offer many different perspectives. However, we believe it would be more personal if we broadened the focus from one person to many.
That's why we focus on six specific students from different backgrounds to educate you about our school, as well as many students with minor roles.
We sincerely hope this video will make you understand why we truly believe Southeast Area Technical High School is the best in the county.
Hi, my name's Jacob Thompson, and today we're going to be learning more about Southeast Area Technical High School.
Hey, welcome in. Are you ready for your interview with CTEC?
Yes.
Awesome.
What's your chosen pathway?
Um, I'm probably stuck between two, chemical technology and cosmetology.
Describe CTEC in one word.
Hmm, extraordinary.
Oil trivia, could you explain what the symbolism of the CTEC crest is?
I would love to. So if you follow this one? Our key amongst access to knowledge to both college and careers. The crown represents honor. Our Florida leaf represents leadership and kindness, and the wheel of work represents the traits of the career in technical, tech, technical education.
How do you like the new campus?
I'm in love with it.
Why did you choose CTEC?
Um, I saw it as an opportunity to get a college education.
How is CTEC different from other schools?
Um, it supports me, and it gives me my chosen career path.
Hey, Thomas, can I ask you a few questions?
Sure.
What's CNN?
CNN is a morning show that the journalism students do that is aired every Monday morning during second period.
Why CTEC?
CTEC? I chose CTEC because I wanted a more rigorous program that focused on hand-on, hands-on learning.
How many CFCC classes are you taking?
Currently, I'm only taking one, which is art appreciation.
What's your chosen pathway?
Journalism.
How's learning here different?
Learning here is different because it's more focused on, like I said earlier, hands-on learning, but also we do a lot of team-building exercises here. I gotta go film, but thank you.
It's your girl, Shanti.
And it's your boy, Tom Tom.
And we welcome to CTEC!
Alvin, could you describe the students here at CTEC?
The students here at CTEC are very kind and generous.
AJ, what's one thing you look forward to this year?
My future at the school and the friendships that I make.
For a two-freshman, how is CTEC different than your middle school?
Because here at CTEC, you gotta be more planned, and it teaches you to be neat and more organized.
Yeah, it's definitely a smaller school, so like, I have like little friendships that I know in every single class.
Ms. Wall, what's your favorite part about teaching here?
I like teaching here because, like AJ said, the environment is really small, and it's really easy for us to have really good relationships, not just as a staff, but also with all of our students.
Ms. Wall, can we see the classrooms under construction?
Unfortunately, we can't see the classrooms that are in the construction because that construction has not started yet. But if you look down this hallway, eventually the construction will take place, and the classrooms that are down this hallway will include the Residential and Community Construction Academy, along with the Public Safety Academy. And located at the front by the lobby, when you walk in the door, will be our Health Careers Academy.
Could you describe CTEC in one word?
Family.
What's the main difference between CTEC and where you went to the middle school?
The teachers here actually care about the students and their success.
What pathways are you considering?
Software development and construction.
Why did you choose CTEC?
Because it's a school where you can get right out of high school and go into the workforce.
Gianna, what's your chosen pathway?
My chosen pathway is nursing, and I want to be a nurse practitioner.
What's the CTEC mascot?
The CTEC mascot is the sea dragon.
How's learning here different?
Learning here is different because you have like more one-on-one time with teachers, and it's like a better opportunity, I guess.
What's your favorite part of the new building?
My favorite part is that we have like more space, and there's more time to do everything.
Hey, guys, can we ask you a few questions?
Yeah.
All right, Fay, how does CTEC help you prepare for the future?
I don't know my future yet, but the teachers are helping me out.
All right, what's your favorite part of the new building?
I like the auditorium.
Oh, that's cool. All right, Ava, what makes CTEC different from other schools?
Well, first, the population, and second, I'm able to go ahead and start taking college classes while I'm in 11th grade.
All right, that's awesome. What is one thing you look forward to this year?
Um...
Could you describe CTEC in one word?
Family.
What's the main difference between CTEC and where you went to the middle school?
The teachers here actually care about the students and their success.
What pathways are you considering?
Software development and construction.
Uh, why'd you choose CTEC?
Because it's a school where you can get right out of high school and go into the workforce.
Gianna, what's your chosen pathway?
My chosen pathway is nursing and I want to be a nurse practitioner.
What's the CTEC mascot?
The CTEC mascot is the sea dragon.
How's learning here different?
Learning here is different because you have like more one-on-one time with teachers and it's like a better opportunity, I guess.
What's your favorite part of the new building?
My favorite part is that we have like more space and there's more time to do everything.
Uh, hey guys, can we ask you a few questions?
Yeah.
All right, Fay, how does CTEC help you prepare for the future?
I don't know my future yet, but the teachers are helping me out.
All right, what's your favorite part of the new building?
Uh, I like the auditorium.
Oh, that's cool, all right. Ava, what makes CTEC different from other schools?
Well, first, the population and second, I'm able to go ahead and start taking college classes while in eleventh grade.
All right, that's awesome. What is one thing you look forward to this year?
Um, making more friends with the freshmen, I guess, because I don't really talk to them that much.
Mia, how's learning different here?
Um, you get a one-on-one with the teachers and then you pay attention and make sure you okay, instead of like running over, like unrigidly.
Um, I heard you, Alex, I heard you play sports here, any plans this year?
Um, I'm running cross-country right now and I'm also going to run track in the future. And I just really look forward to working with my teammates and that the fact this school gives me the opportunity to run to a different school and not just here.
Uh, now what makes CTEC different from the other schools in the county?
What makes CTEC different is that like we can find an opportunity to like find a certain job that we want to look forward to working into and they don't really give that at different high schools. And you can also leave here with an associate's degree, which is really helpful when we get out.
Hey Jay, can you describe CTEC in one word?
It's interesting.
What's your chosen pathway?
Um, I want to be a doctor, definitely in the medical field.
That's awesome, um, what's, what is the difference between middle school and CTEC?
Not really the size, it's just the people are different. There's much more people who really want to focus on their career here and not really, you don't have to worry about bad people.
All right, why did you choose CTEC?
I chose CTEC because it's different and I really, a medical field is really a long path to take. You have a lot of years in school, so definitely wanted to shorten that time down as much as I could.
What is one thing that you're looking forward to this year?
I'm definitely looking forward to the coffee shop, I heard there was going to be. I'm like very excited for that.
Uh, we want to thank you for the CTEC interview.
Thank you for interviewing me at CTEC, have a nice day.
Thank you, everyone, that was great, very good showcase of your school.
They worked really hard, I'm very proud.
I can tell.
Thank you.
Dr. Skipper, when is that coffee shop going to open?
It's in the next phase.
Okay.
I think we're going to start construction hopefully in February, so maybe next school year.
Does anyone have any questions?
What's your enrollment up to now?
A hundred and forty.
I saw them all in the cafeteria.
Yes.
It's a big difference, yes, it is. Great job, it was a wonderful video, because you can tell you put a lot of work into it. Yep, and thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Our first recognition for the evening goes to the International School at Gregory's Parent Teacher Association. Gregory was recently recognized as a National PTA School of Excellence. The School of Excellence program supports and celebrates partnerships between PTAs and schools. So at this time, we will ask members of the Gregory PTA Board to please come forward to be recognized and we will start with our great principal at Gregory, Ms. Leann Lampley. Next, we have last year's president, Mr. Tim Marshburn. The current PTA president, Ms. Tammy Pratt D. Ortiz. Vice President Tiffany Salter. Treasurer Melissa Blair. Secretary Tyler Torrick. And any other members who happen to be here to support Gregory tonight. Congratulations Gregory on this outstanding accomplishment. Our next recognition is for one of our teachers. Hundreds of applicated, uh, applications from talented educators went out for this award. And Lauren Thompson, who is our lead coordinator of the Marine Science Academy at Ashley High School, was selected by the Ecology Project International, called EPI, to participate in an eight-day teacher fellowship this summer in the Greater Yellowstone Ecosystem. So at this time, if Ms. Thompson is here, will you please come forward? The Marine Science Academy participates in service opportunities in the community through beach cleanups and community outreach. So I'm sure Ms. Thompson learned some valuable information during this experience that she will share with her students. Congratulations on this fellowship, Ms. Thompson, and thank you for your commitment to our students. Our next recognition was awarded by the United States State Department Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs. An Isaac Bear student was among over three thousand applicants from across the country and she was awarded the National Security Language Initiative for Youth Scholarship. So at this time, I will ask Ms. Macy Boran from Isaac Bear to please come forward. This summer, Macy traveled to Russia to receive formal language instruction. She lived with the host family and experienced the local culture as a part of an immersion environment. If Macy's parents are here, would you please stand? And Principal Ron Valens, would you please stand? Any other Macy supporters out there? Congratulations on your outstanding achievement, Macy, we are so very proud of you. Our next recognition, recognition is the Outstanding Cadet Award. The Daughters of the American Revolution recently awarded an Outstanding Cadet Medal to Petty Officer First Class Abigail Fairchild, who serves on the Sand Hill Squadron of the US Naval Sea Cadets Corps. This silver medal is awarded to a cadet who demonstrates outstanding leadership, honor, service, courage, and patriotism. Ms. Fairchild is a member of the Wilmington Wave Swim Team and she's in the JROTC program. She plans to attend college next year to become a military nurse. This summer, she spent fifteen days in the UK as part of the Sea Cadets International Exchange Program. So, if Abigail's family is here and Principal Mary Paul Bell, I see mom in the back with the camera, go mom! Congratulations, Ms. Fairchild, on your outstanding accomplishment and we wish you Godspeed with your future endeavors. I think it's girls' night. Our next recognition is for the highest honor in Girl Scouting and this is the Girl Scout Gold Award. This demanding achievement challenges young women to excel in leadership, community service, career planning, and personal development. So at this time, I am proud to introduce Ms. Bianca Murray from Wilmington Early College High School. Her project focused on the arts by incorporating the A in STEAM education. She is an accomplished musician and she built a website sharing music resources, tips on how to make your own instruments, and information on the fundamentals of music. You go, girl! Bianca's family, if you're here, would you please stand? And her principal, Ms. Regina Wooton. Congratulations. I know y'all are proud of her. Next, we will recognize and congratulate another one of our students who received national recognition for the NAACP Afro-Academic Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympics, known as ACO. This national competition is designed to encourage high academic and cultural achievement among African-American high school students. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Kennedy Martin, who is a senior at Laney High School, to please come forward. Kennedy, now this is cute, y'all listen to this. Kennedy won a bronze medal for her sculpture, which she called Lifesaver and it was inspired by her grandfather, who used to pass out lifesavers candy to his grandchildren. He always gave her the green ones because he wanted her to go, go, go! So in addition to her medal, Kennedy received a $1,000 scholarship and an iPad. And her mama... Hold on. Her mama in the back in the red dress is our very own Stephanie Bolden, who is our assistant principal at Laney High School. So we will ask if your family's here or Principal DeCharm, everyone, please stand and congratulate Ms. Kennedy on her national award. And finally, we have one more young lady. I would like to invite Ms. Fatima Vasquez to please come forward to be recognized. Fatima, congratulations on being named one of the winner, winners of the 2019 Young Artist Competition, sponsored by PANK, the Professional Educators of North Carolina. Fatima was in the fifth grade at Wrightsboro Elementary when she created this award-winning artwork that's on the screen. She's now in the sixth grade at Holly Shelter Middle School. So if your parents are here, Ms. Vasquez and Principal, I see you mom and dad, and Principal Jane Keiker and her art teacher, Ms. Guthrie. Congratulations to you all, Fatima. We are so proud of you, keep up the great work. That concludes our recognitions and I thank you all for being such a kind and attentive audience.
Item number four, call to the audience. Each speaker is limited, limited to three minutes. However, time does not permit dialogue between the board and the community. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairperson retains the right to limit discussions on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. The first person to sign up, James Little. James Little. Next person, Mary Butner.
Good evening. My name is Mary Butner and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my neighborhood, Windward Oaks. Located off of Mason Borough Loop Road, we are labeled as Planning Block 261 on the redistricting maps, which impacts seventeen current Roland-Grice students. We are located directly across the street from Parsley Elementary and our children continue on to Roland-Grice and then Hoggard. The proposed maps 3A and 3B have us moving from Roland-Grice to Myrtle Grove District for middle school and we are here to ask the committee to please reconsider this move as doing so aligns with several of Mr. Cropper's guiding principles for redistricting. The first principle we'd like to address is to establish clear feeder patterns and continuity. The inclusion of Windward Oaks in the Roland-Grice District will help balance the split of Parsley students between Myrtle Grove and Roland-Grice. Currently, the split is even. Redistricting would mean a significantly smaller percentage of Parsley students attending Roland-Grice. Keeping our children there would help balance that split and makes much more sense for high school as Roland-Grice feeds 100% of students to Hoggard and as Myrtle Grove feeds 75% to Ashley. The second guiding principle we'd like to address is keeping students in close proximity to the school. Geographically, we are closer to Roland-Grice and the morning traffic flow in that direction is much more sensible for both bus riders and commuters. While we understand traffic is problematic countywide, we do have safety concerns specific to this intersection at the front of our neighborhood as it is a crosswalk to Parsley. There already, there has already been a child hit by a car a couple of years back. Currently, our children do not have to cross this busy road to board their morning bus, but would have to have moved to Myrtle Grove. The final and to us most important guiding principle that's affected is the impact on students. If you look at the maps, Windward Oaks is the first neighborhood to be impacted. We're literally right on the line. Seventeen students impacted, seventeen students that we are asking you all please keep at Roland-Grice. Middle school is such an emotional time for kids. As the mom of two sixth-grade boys, who are both nervous about starting middle school and have had to endure so much change in their life already, I'm happy to say they love Roland-Grice so far. They, along with the kids in our neighborhood, love Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Broadfoot, their Spanish teacher, Ms. Mr. Hewlett for orchestra, Ms. Klein, the cross-country coach, Ms. T for Battle of the Books, and Mrs. Harrison, the AIG Coordinator, who has already created individual learning plans for many of them. Many of our families have been through Roland-Grice with their older children and have established strong ties and meaningful relationships at Roland-Grice. The PTSO is incredibly active and has helped provide important resources and experiences to nearly eight hundred students. Over one-third of the PTSO board positions are filled by parents in our neighborhood alone. The PTSO president, Corinne Navrus, is a Windward Oaks resident who's worked hard to implement several positive changes at Roland-Grice. She says all the contributions she made are not only for her children, but all of our neighbors and she knows they will come through the school as well. Our parents and families agree, we have all put in so much time, energy, resources, and love into this school and we really want to remain at Roland-Grice. Our kids and families, I'm at the thank you part, sorry. I'll hurry. Our kids and families desperately want to stay in the school where our kids are thriving. We are hopeful that they can continue their education in the school. Thank you for your consideration and we look forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Next is Rebecca Carter.
Good evening. I am extremely disappointed in the Board of Education. This bus transportation issue is extremely out of hand. I can count on one hand the amount of times that my daughter has even arrived to school on time this year. It is absolutely absurd that a student misses more than thirty minutes on their first core class, on the first class. It's, it's a domino effect. Not only is it affecting her, it's affecting my concerns throughout the day, whether she made it, whether she doesn't. I, I'm not at liberty to drive her to school every morning. Just this morning, I had to turn around to make sure she arrived. On my way back, I saw students that were still out waiting for their bus. Not everyone has the opportunity to make sure, it's just, it's, it's unacceptable. And we just need a confident resolution on how the Board of Education is going to take care of our children. It, it, it makes no, no, no sense. I mean, there's no excuse on why this is taking place. Today, there was an accident in New Hanover County with students involved. Does that, is, are we down another bus? I mean, we have bus drivers that are overworked, underpaid. Where's the funds coming from? What is the confident resolution to resolve this issue? Because I'm not the only parent with this concern. And not only in the morning, but in the evening as well. When the time changes, I cannot have a peace of mind of having my daughter waiting outside when I have to be at my desk at eight o'clock in the morning. I work just like everyone in this room. It's, it's just, I, I know you can't respond, but we need a response. And, and we don't, I don't know how that's going to come about, but some kind of communication with parents because I, I know my time is running out, there's so much I want to say, but just understand that it's completely unacceptable and I'm speaking on behalf of all of our children. understand that it's completely unacceptable, and I'm speaking on behalf of all of our children, not just mine.
Thank you.
All right. I didn't, I'm sorry, ma'am. Where do you, where does your child attend school? I just wanted to make.
She attends to a Trask, um, Trask Middle.
Thank you.
Reverend Dante Murphy? Reverend Murphy? Circling back to the first name, James Little. Did he walk in? No? Melody Jolly? Melody Jolly? Brad Smith?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns with the redistricting as well. My name is Brad Smith. My family lives on Middle Sound Loop Road in Ogden, and we're currently districted for Noble Middle School. It's our neighborhood school, only four miles from our home, and where most of our children's friends will attend. It's also the top middle school in the county, and the current school district is one of the main reasons we built our home in this area. With my time today, I would like to use the guiding principles to highlight why my family, as well as thousands of others in the Middle Sound Loop and Bay Shore communities, feel that this is the best option, the only option, being Option 3A. In regard to balancing school facility utilization, Option 3A results in a utilization percentage at both schools that's five points lower than Option 3B, so therefore, it's clearly the best choice. For accounting for future growth, I really have no data to support this, but we all know that Wilmington is growing everywhere, so I would imagine that's fairly not applicable. For prioritizing close proximity, under 3B, the commute increases our travel by twenty miles each day. Of course, that translates to 100 miles each week, 440 miles each month. This will significantly impact our children's ability to participate in after-school activities, the time needed to complete daily homework and work on school projects, and the time to just play and be a kid. There are no other children in the county that would be affected so dramatically by the redistricting. You may be aware that the only way to exit Middle Sound Loop Road is through the traffic circle in front of Ogden Elementary. Traffic there is already an issue, as on Market Street, of course, and the concern is that adding another school's buses on the loop at the same time is only going to exacerbate this issue. I worry about how bad traffic would be, and even hearing the lady that just spoke, I worry if our children would even be able to make it to school on time. Established in clear feeder patterns and continuity, Middle Sound Loop truly is a community. It's made up of subdivisions, but again, there's only one way on and one way off. These kids have been together since kindergarten, with many attending daycare, and then Option 3A keeps those friendships intact, which, again, as mentioned earlier, is so important at this age. In terms of minimizing the impact, the only way to do this is to vote for Option 3A, which, of course, for the reasons I've mentioned before. When looking at considering economic, cultural, and ethnic diversity, in speaking with Matthew Cropper of Cropper GIS, the only reason that 3B was created is to balance demographics. Of course, I understand why, as diversity is very important. However, when considering all of the guiding principles, they clearly favor Option 3A, and we hope that one principle is not going to override all others, especially when the impact on the children is so significant. Thank you for your time.
Sarah Sloop?
Hi, I'm Sarah Sloop. My daughter is a seventh-grade student at Trask Middle School, and I'm here because I'm pretty upset about the dress code policy. This past Friday, seventy-eight female students were dress-coded, one male student was dress-coded. My daughter left the house in what she wore last year in sixth grade for every dress-down day, and we never were told anything different. These children were taken out of their homeroom class for an hour and a half until their parents could bring them clothes, or they were going to be in ISS all day long, in-school suspension. My daughter is a straight-A student. She does not get in trouble. She was very upset, along with a lot of her other friends. I think that, you know, the email I received back from the Board of Education said that the incident was addressed as it should have been in the guidelines, and I don't think any incident should be addressed like that, shaming students. They couldn't even figure out what was wrong with what they were wearing. I mean, this is what they did all last year. The dress code, I think, is outdated. I think it needs to be revisited. I think it discriminates against women. I think it's very gender-based. And then my other problem is Ms. Kimball, the seventh-grade assistant or principal that was dress-coding all of them. She wasn't even in the employee dress code for New Hanover County. It says that they should not wear leggings, skinny jeans, or other excessively tight-fitting pants unless covered by a top or dress no shorter than four inches above the middle of the knee. She was wearing a black, short, tight shirt with tight camouflage leggings, or I guess jean, jeggings, whatever they are. So I don't understand how she is trying to, you know, dress-code these children when she's in fact not following her rules, and nobody threatened her with in-school suspension all day. So I just, I really hope that that is revisited. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ashley Miller. Ashley Miller. All right, moving on to Joseph Finley.
Good evening. Hope you all are well. My name is Joseph Finley, and I'm a co-founder of Tech Mountain and Castle Branch, but tonight I'm here representing an organization that we call Community Conversations, which is really a community of people who are truly concerned about the students in our public school system, just as many of you are, or all of you are, obviously. We are engaging our community in a variety of ways, but our mission is to be an advocate for equity and excellence for all students in the public county school system. We are doing this in a variety of ways. We're trying to engage the community in encouraging volunteers throughout all the schools in our school system, understanding that there are some schools that don't have many volunteers at all, whereas others have volunteers they have to turn away. So there's a disparity there, and we're trying to find ways to isolate and manage that. We're also looking at ways that we can encourage more retired teachers to become mentors, especially African-American teachers who have retired, and new African-American teachers that are coming into the school system, helping them understand how to navigate those waters. As far as initiatives, we like to see from the New Hanover County Public Schools, one of, a few of these are very big issues, and I know you guys are aware of. One being the real huge disparity in the percentage of African-American teachers that are in our public county school system. In the state of North Carolina, according to the Southern Coalition of Social Justice, and this is from the 2018 Racial Report Card, in North Carolina, African-American teachers make up sixteen percent of the teachers in the state, and African-American students represent about 25% of the students. In New Hanover County, as I'm sure you all know, African-American teachers represent 5% of the teachers in our county, as opposed to the twenty, excuse me, the sixteen percent of African-American students or teachers throughout the state, and the students represent about 19%. So a huge disparity in the percentage of teachers that are represented compared to the number of students in our system. I think this leads to the next stat I'm going to tell you about, which is looking at suspensions in our schools. In the state of North Carolina alone, African-American students are 4.3 times more likely than a white student to be suspended for in-school suspension. If you look at New Hanover County, that number jumps up significantly to eight times, 8.3 times, actually. The average African-American student is suspended in-school suspension than a white student. Put that in another way, again, these students represent about 19% of the students in our county, and yet represent, guys, they represent over 60% of the students that are being suspended every single year. I think you can recognize, as we do, that this is a real problem, that we can do something about. I know many of you have, maybe all of you went through the racial equity training over the summer. I hope for some of you, it's broadened your perspective in some ways, to see that this data, this is real information, and it talks about things being systemic, and it is systemic, but you know what? You guys are part of that system. You're actually leaders in that system, and you can do something about it. This community has elected you to come in and make these changes, and these type of changes are hard. I'm not saying they're not hard, but you guys can put the vision ahead and be the leaders to say, this has to change in our community. We're embarrassed by this. So I hope you'll join me and join our community in saying that we want this to change. Thank you.
Katie McGuire?
Hi, my name is Katie McGuire. I live in the North Chase neighborhood, which is right across the street from Trask and Laney. I kind of wanted to address the redistricting, but in the sense of busing, our neighborhood is slated to be redistricted to Holly Shelter Middle School, and I've written to several board members and the entire board as a whole about it several times. I also have collected signatures from the North Chase neighborhood, sixty-three residents of North Chase about it, and in the past, I have referenced the board's points. However, I do think that it has to come back to busing, because at the root of it, Holly Shelter is not a bad option, and I'm not opposed to it. But what I am opposed to is my children being late for school every day. And in North Chase, we can walk to Trask, and my kids get to school on time. We go to Castle Hain Elementary School, and we're bused there. It's right next to Holly Shelter. They do get to school on time, because we're the first buses. We don't have to wait for middle school to get bused, but we are getting home 25 minutes later this year than they were last year. My kids are getting dropped off at home at 3:25, which is the same time middle school lets out, so I'm wondering what time they're picking the middle schoolers up at school. As the woman who spoke earlier said, it's unacceptable. The kids who are waiting for the bus to Trask are still on the street waiting after school has already started. Teachers at Trask tell me that the kids are getting to school well after eight, well after 8:30. So when thinking about the redistricting, I think that it would really behoove the board to go back to the guiding principles, go back to the drawing board and say, we really need to have a one-mile radius, and if they can walk to school, let them go to the school they can walk to, unless we're going to do something major about busing. Pay drivers more, get more drivers, but it is unacceptable for kids to get to school late, or for kids to be getting home an hour after school has ended. Elementary school kids getting home an hour after school ended, they've already been in school for six and a half, seven hours. It's too long a day. They're missing after-school activities. I mean, just get them to school and home on time, and then send them to any school you want to, but they need to get there and get home, and that's got to be number one before these guiding principles even get addressed. Thanks.
And just to confirm, Mr. Edgerton's not here? Clyde Edgerton? Okay, so that is all we have for the sign-up tonight. Moving on to item number five, administrative personnel.
None.
My name was on the list.
At the time that we had the sign-up sheet, we did, it was full, and we had the, we had a notice up on the counter that the sign-up sheet was full. I believe someone else started one, but we had the sign-up note. Since we had three people that didn't show, if the board wants, we could allot three extra slots, but.
Did you sign up back here?
Right.
Yeah, that wasn't a sign-up list.
That list was full, and we had a sheet up there that said that the list was full. So we did not have any space as of, as of before the meeting started, so we had, we did have a sign. Well, somebody started kind of a fake sign-up sheet, I think, but we did have an announcement. We had it on social media that we didn't have any more space, because we allotted ten. But, yeah, but if it's up to the board, if we want to allot three more spaces, then I'm fine with that.
Okay. Absolutely.
Any reason why not?
Yeah.
So which three do you?
I don't know. So who, how many people are here to speak? So if there's people from Masonboro Forest, can you, are you okay with one person speaking on your behalf? Okay. And so then you've got one person, and you've got one person? Okay. So if that's fine. All right. Do you all care about the order? Go ahead. You're up here first, you're closest.
Thank you. I'm sorry for that.
That's all right.
Misunderstanding.
Just for future reference, if y'all could check the social media websites and check online, because we do have a limited number of time, a limited amount of time and limited number of spaces. So, and we do have, we will have posted if we have space available, so just for future reference, but go ahead.
Okay. I'm here to talk about everyone's favorite subject, redistricting, of course. My name is Brenda Cribb, and I live in the Masonboro Forest neighborhood, Planning Block 280. My neighborhood schools are Parsley Elementary and Myrtle Grove Middle. Masonboro Forest has been in the Parsley district since 2001, when the school opened, and I know that Mr. Cropper does not feel like that's relevant to the process, but of course, we do, because it means that we've formed relationships with teachers and administrators over time, and many of the school's volunteers and PTA officers have come from our neighborhood. We are very involved there. Unfortunately, in the redistricting options so far, we have been shifted to Holly Tree instead, in all six options. All of them make us leave Parsley and travel to a school that's 50% further away. One of the ways to get there would be by going past Parsley on Masonboro Loop, which would be a nightmare of a commute, if I've ever seen one. Never mind the children passing by their old school that they love on the way to a new school, but the other option would be to go out to College Road and add to that dangerous crush of traffic. And as you guys know, traffic is gridlocked on College Road in the mornings particularly. Next, my next-door neighbor's just recently rear-ended in that section of road at school commute time. If we are moved to Holly Tree, it means our neighborhood must also change middle schools to Roland Grice, which seems like a lot of change for one neighborhood. Our neighborhood has historically attended Myrtle Grove Middle, which is easier for us to travel to than Roland Grice. And traveling to Roland Grice would mean another commute up College Road through the same horrible traffic, Hogard traffic, and all the way up there. We have, we brought up our traffic and logistical concerns previously. We've sent a lot of emails and have asked for at least one option to keep us at Parsley, but instead, neighborhoods to the south of us that currently attend Bellamy have been added to Parsley instead, Planning Blocks 311 and 287, while we have been moved out. I don't think that helps minimize the impact of redistricting, and those are small neighborhoods, they're just 14 students, so they should return to Bellamy. Those children don't want to change schools any more than our children do. There are also neighborhoods to the north of Parsley that are a lot closer to Holly Tree, but they are still Parsley. So meanwhile, we are being told that we must attend an elementary school that's three miles away, which definitely doesn't fit the model of having, of attending the school of closest proximity. So in this scenario, the neighborhoods that are traveling south to get to Parsley will be passing them going north to go to Holly Tree. So, and same issue with middle school. So it just, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense for traffic in Wilmington. So our neighborhood isn't huge, 34 students. It is important to us, I know. It is important to us to remain at Parsley if possible, so please consider an option that will keep Masonboro Forest at Parsley, if possible. Thank you.
Do you want to get the contact? All right, I think there was a gentleman and a lady.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Shelley Piakowski. I'm a representative from Upper Reach neighborhood, Planning Block 254. I know many of you, I've talked to many of you as well. We know that your service on the school board comes with a lot of responsibility, and that all of your decisions have been achieved with much thought and deliberation, and we really appreciate that. Over the last few months, the redistricting board has allowed our neighborhood, Upper Reach, within PB 254 to share our concerns. We support elementary Option 3A and 3B for PB 254, which remains within the Parsley district. Besides providing continuity for our children and neighborhood, PB 254 supports the redistricting guiding principles in the following ways. Balance, account for future growth. I've combined these two, principal, because we feel like they go hand-in-hand. I've combined these two principles because we feel like they go hand-in-hand with each other. The entire planning block of two fifty-four is developed and has no tracts of land designed for new neighborhood development. In addition, PB two fifty-four only has twenty-one children currently enrolled at Parsley with limited or no room for future growth. Close proximity, currently, options 3A and 3B keep our neighborhood at Parsley Elementary, which is the closest school to us at point five miles away. Prior map options had redistricted us over five miles away, which we did not support those options. Minimizing impact on students, map options 3A and 3B impact the lowest number of students, only twenty-six point four two percent affected versus almost forty percent in the other previous maps. Consider socioeconomic diversity. This guiding principle is where we feel that PB two fifty-four offers the most impact. PB two fifty-four is one of the most economically diverse areas within the Parsley School District, and represents a variety of neighborhood types consisting of single-family homes, duplexes, and prefabricated homes that have a vast array of family incomes. As this process moves forward, we want you to understand that Upper Reach and PB two fifty-four is a small, affordable, and diverse community that offers a lot of value to Parsley Elementary, and fulfills the objectives set forth by the redistricting committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and we appreciate all of your efforts that you've made during this process. So thank you all.
I'm Rebecca Trammell, and I am with Joe Finley as part of Community Conversations. Before I begin, what I want to say, I want to begin with a moment of silence for Jamila Quivado, who took her life on nine twenty-five, twenty nineteen. October seventh is a world day of bullying prevention, and we are being encouraged to wear blue in solidarity with those who are being bullied, and also to remind those of us who can to speak up for them. And that's what I want to talk about tonight, is about how we use our strength. We have the opportunity, those of us who are empowered, those of us who have a voice can speak up for the voiceless. Tonight, we've heard some very passionate speeches about why it's so important for their children to go to the school of their preference. Those are good reasons. These are parents that are fighting for their kids. I have no kids. I'm here to speak for the children who have no parents to stand here tonight. And what I'm asking you tonight is that as you consider the voice of this community, consider the voice of the voiceless. Those who have, those children who are having a hard time being heard, please lean in. Use your positions of power to lean in and listen to the kids who can't speak for themselves. Fight for the destinies of those who cannot, who have no one else to defend them. That's not to say that neighborhood schools might not be the best option. It might be for our community. But if that's the way this goes, how are we going to make it an equitable experience? Because that's the important part of public education. The purpose of public education is so that in this country, no matter if you are rich or poor, or black, or white, or Hispanic, or Asian, it doesn't matter, because in this awesome country, we have the opportunity to learn. And I just hope that you make that happen for all of our kids in New Hanover County. Thank you so much.
Okay. Was that everyone? Sir, did you have your hand up?
Yeah.
All right, one up.
How you doing, Board? Thank you for giving me the time to talk. My name's Kevin Hennessy. I live in Bay Shore State, over in Ogden. My children attend Ogden Elementary right now, and we are slated to be moved either to Holly Shelter in Plan B, or stay in Noble in Plan A. Biggest thing I just want to touch base on too, is, I know you've heard it before, is busing. I mean, Noble is two point four miles from our house in Bay Shore. Holly Shelter is eleven point six miles from our house. Traffic on Market Street is a nightmare. I don't know if you guys have been over there and driven it, or tried driving from Bay Shore or Middle Sound Loop, as Brad talked about before. Both of them have one way in and one way out. Traffic in the morning, logistically between Ogden Elementary, when we drop kids off or we take the bus, it is very congested at the roundabout. Adding the busing to get to Holly Shelter is going to make that even tenfold. Plus the construction on Market Street, people coming in, people leaving to go, you know, out of the area, it's just terrible. We're hearing busing for, it's going to be an hour, an hour plus to get to Holly Shelter. How is that going to be possible for our kids to get to school in the morning on time when it rains? If you've been on Market Street when it rains or college, you know that the traffic on there, there's five, six accidents at a time, it's bumper-to-bumper. Our kids all have after-school activities, both of mine play travel soccer, I work in Southport, I drive back up, I get them, trying to get, logistically to get that done is going to be nearly impossible. And that's not going to help the situation of having them spend two hours plus time on a bus every day to get to and from school. I know, I ask you to really think about that part alone, but, you know, what else I want to say here? Yeah, just the distance alone, twelve miles versus two miles. I mean, Noble is our neighborhood school, and the reason why it's a neighborhood school is the parent involvement. It's community school, learning environment, student involvement. Everyone there is a tight-knit group. Our kids go from grammar school, I mean, from Noble, I mean, sorry, from Ogden on to Noble, everyone knows each other. To pull them out and send them to a school eleven and a half miles away that they're not going to know anybody, honestly, makes no sense to me. I mean, eleven and a half miles is a long way. That's twenty-two, twenty-three miles added every day to go there and back to school. It's exhausting. You're talking about kids that are in sixth grade, after being in school all day, to get on a bus, have to take that, and then get home, and then try to get them there to extra school, after-school activities, it's going to be nearly impossible to do. You know, I ask you to look, vote for Plan A because, and 3A, because it just makes total sense. 3B would just push us to the point, I mean, of just not being able to go there. So I ask you to really think on that. Thank you.
All right, I have been asked to take a five-minute break, so we will do that at this time.